Did I put my coat on?
Well, I've got mine right there. If I get too cold, it's going on.
Under.
Okay.
Look at how much room we have.
Yeah.
But yeah, Alexandra's doing well.
It was long. Okay, that's what I wanted to know. But she just needed some encouragement, didn't she, today? Some nurse care?
She asked for some supplies.
Oh, okay, that doesn't surprise me. Yeah, that would make sense. Yeah.
I mean, yeah, I think overall.
Who had gone with her? Don't know? Okay. Oh, I don't know. He probably went with her.
He wasn't there.
Okay. And I, her mom is here.
She had. She's a doctor.
I know. No, she's a nurse.
A nurse.
Yeah. Yeah.
But they got like...
I don't know. Turn the mic on. I'm going to call the meeting to order. So Lauralee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Here.
Denise Chapman. Amy Doran.
Here.
Dawn Kirk.
Here.
Barbara Cruz.
Here.
Alexandra Lessem. Nancy Rumpfelt.
Here.
Thank you, Lauralee. And Nancy, will you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Stu, would you please read the mission statement?
Sure. The Thompson School District will be a school district that empowers, challenges, and inspires students, faculty, staff, parents, school leaders, and community members to learn, achieve, and excel.
Thank you. All right. The first item that we have on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda for tonight's meeting, which is January 17, 2024. Are there any changes or additions to tonight's meeting? Hearing none, I will take a motion to adopt the agenda as printed.
So moved.
Second.
So I have a first from Stu and a second from Dawn. So Lauralee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessem. Nancy Rumpfelt.
Aye.
All right. We have a variety of minutes to approve again tonight. So we'll start out with the approval of the minutes for our December 13 meeting, which was December 13, 2023. Does anyone have any changes or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, I will take a motion to approve the minutes for the December 13, 2023 meeting.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. That is a first from Dawn and a second from Denise. Lauralee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessem. Nancy Rumpfelt.
Aye.
Thank you. And then we have also approval of the minutes for January 3, 2024. This would have been our last study session. But this is for the special meeting that we had first. And so there were minutes attached. Does anybody have any changes or corrections to the minutes? Okay, hearing none, I will take a motion to approve the minutes for our special session.
So moved.
So first from second. First from Stu, second from Denise. And Lauralee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessem. Nancy Rumpfelt.
Aye.
All right, thank you. And then we have approval of the minutes for our regular meeting that was on January 3, 2024. Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes of that meeting? Hearing none, I will take a motion to approve the minutes for...
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
First from Denise and a second from Dawn. And then Lauralee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessem. Nancy Rumpfelt.
Aye.
Thank you. And all of our minutes passed at a vote of six to zero. All right, we will move now into public participation. And I'll turn that over to Dr. Schaefer.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board of Education, our community and their audience this evening. Welcome back to school. As we've returned from winter vacation, I'm pleased to provide my monthly update through this PowerPoint presentation. So after a restful winter break, we were pleased to welcome students back into the classroom on January 4. The first half of our 2023-24 school year was excellent, and we are looking forward to continuing that success throughout the second semester. Martin Luther King Junior Day. Each year, the community hosts a celebration program in honor of the late Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Unfortunately, due to inclement weather, Monday evening's event was canceled. However, we hope you will join us in continuing to celebrate the impact of Dr. King and his long-lasting legacy. The local celebration is hosted in partnership with Thompson School District, as well as the City of Loveland, with funding from the Thompson Education Foundation. Winners of this year's Student Art and Essay Contest will be featured soon by the district. We actually hope to invite the students here to our board meeting in February, so maybe they can read their essays and share their artwork with us. On a related note, and I know it's always a disappointment to our students and staff when we cancel school, but I wanted to take a quick moment to mention our district closure evaluation processes that we follow during times of inclement weather. Each day, our staff works tirelessly to help ensure that we can provide a safe and nurturing environment for each of our school communities. Sometimes, Mother Nature doesn't cooperate with us, and we have to make the difficult decision to either delay the start of the school day or close our schools and district offices. In working to decide the best path forward for our school communities, we evaluate current site conditions, examine current and forecasted weather patterns, and also work with our city and town government partners to help get a proper assessment on how our district will likely be impacted by a storm or upcoming inclement weather. The safety of each student and staff member in our buildings is and will continue to be our top priority, and we deeply appreciate your patience and support. With the start of the second semester, our schools are already gearing up for the 2024-25 school year. Eighth grade students will have the opportunity to start registering at the campus of their future high school, with Mountain View High School having completed their special event last week. The registration nights allow students to visit the campus, speak with staff, and explore opportunities. Please visit our district website for more information. The 2024 TSD Student Art Show, Thompson School District, is pleased to announce its 2024 Student Art Show, which is on display at the Loveland Public Library until March 5. An opening reception for the show was held on January 11. We are extremely proud of the students and all their beautiful artwork. We hope you will stop by to celebrate these amazing artists. High Plains Seventh Grade Research Team, congratulations to the High Plains School Seventh Grade Research Team who effectively designed an experiment proposal that was deemed worthy of investigation 250 miles above Earth aboard the International Space Station. The experiment compares the growth of a plant when a seed is germinated in space in contrast to what happens on Earth. The team will be working hard over the next few weeks as they prepare trial experiments, revisions, and safety checks to their experiment before final approval and launch in the spring or summer of 2024. This is a wonderful opportunity and accomplishment. We are extremely proud of these young scientists. As you may have heard, January is designated as School Board Appreciation Month. And on behalf of our students, families, staff, members, and community, I want to personally thank each of our amazing Board of Education members for all they do. Later on in our agenda will be, I will get to read a proclamation proclaiming January's Board of Education Appreciation Month. So I want, I'm extremely honored and pleased. We are going to be introducing to you six incredible students. All of our students are incredible, but we have six really incredible students here this evening who are Betcher semifinalists. So let me tell you a little bit about this, and then we're going to recognize these students and have them come forward, and we'll take a picture with the Board of Education. We have six students here in our school district who have been selected as Betcher Scholarship semifinalists. The Betcher Scholarship is a four-year, full tuition and partial living expenses merit-based academic scholarship awarded to graduating Colorado high school students. Award recipients, on average, rank in the top 2% of their graduating classes. These next few slides will spotlight our six fantastic honorees. Mountain View High School has two semifinalists this year. And a special congratulations. And so I'm going to start naming students when I call you. If you can just stand, and we'll recognize you as individuals, then as a group. So from Mountain View, we have two individuals. Annika Sutter. If you would stand, Annika. And yep. And I'd also like Miren Napolitano to please rise as well. I think you're here. So super proud of the two of you. And now we're going to go on to Thompson Valley High School. From Thompson Valley High School, we have Jaden Fitzpatrick. Jaden, would you stand? And from Birth at High School, we have J.C. Taylor. J.C.? I'm very, very proud of the two of you. And then from Loveland High School, we have two semifinalists. I would ask first Egan... I don't want to butcher this. Bowersfeld? And then I would also ask Kennedy Lane. Also to rise, please. The Betcher Scholarship is really one of the most competitive and prestigious programs throughout our region. It is an exceptionally high honor to be named a semifinalist within this program. We are extremely proud of these six students. We're so proud of you. It's a lot of work. And I'm going to ask the six of you to come forward because we want to take a picture with you. Okay, so moving on. As you know, each month, we have an opportunity to recognize three members of our Thompson School District team. A staff member from each of our employee groups. So we have classified, licensed, and APT, which is our administrative group. These are peer nominated. And so we are tonight going to have the nominators. Go ahead and come forward as I call your name, and you're going to let us know who you nominated and why. We'll ask you to come up to the podium, please. You'll notice that there are some plaques up there. So as you're done reading why you nominated your individual, if you can please hand them their plaque, that would be amazing. And then when we're done with this whole group, we'll, actually, then we move on to our Community Champion Award. And so the Community Champion is a new award we've implemented this year to recognize a community group, a nonprofit group, other groups within our organization that help support our... organization that help support our students and our schools. And so we'll introduce, actually, we have several groups that will be recognized this evening for community champions. And then, of course, it wouldn't be complete without taking another picture, so we'll invite out all of our award winners to take a picture. So we'll first start with our APT tonight, and so tonight, we're gonna be recognizing Brandy Stott. Brandy is a principal, our principal, at Lincoln Elementary School, and Brandy was nominated by Kelly Spradley. So if you would come forward, please, and...[632.62][632.65][applause]
Yes. So Brandy's an amazing leader. She's professional, and yet she's a friend to all staff members. Her Wednesday morning meetings are well-organized and informative. She plans fun and collaborative activities. Sometimes, I like her ideas so much that I implement them in my own classroom. She's all hands-on-deck with disciplinary issues. She steps up and she calls parents, and as we've been short of counselor this year, or at least at the beginning of the year, she also was teaching our kids during specials as the counselor. So in sum, she makes me want to be a better teacher, and I think she's the best. So that's Brandy Stott.[688.62][688.65][applause]
Thank you.
Congratulations, Brandy.
Thank you.
So next, we wanna move on to licensed, and so this evening, we're going to be recognizing Susan Scott, who is our Business Community Coordinator, and Susan was nominated by Tierney
So Susan has been increasing access to learning, work-based learning opportunities above and beyond the classroom by facilitating everything from the initial contact with business partners to the coordination of field trips. She's developed an ecosystem of support for both students and community members involved in work-based learning experiences. She's cultivated high-level work-based learning experiences, such as internships and apprenticeships for over 50 TSD students over the last few years. She's increased the capacity of the college and career team so that we are able to add more people to serve more students. Thanks, Susan.
So last, but certainly not least, is our classified. So Brandy Wilson, who serves as a registrar at Turner Middle School. It's my understanding that Brandy is not here this evening, but her nominator, Andrea Wallace, is here, and Andrea wanted to come and publicly recognize Brandy, so...
Thank you. So Brandy started her role as registrar this summer, and she's already doing an amazing job. She takes initiative, is upbeat, outgoing, and friendly, and she keeps a positive attitude even while facing a million schedule changes, parent inquiries, and student concerns. Her attention to detail and confidentiality are excellent. When she has questions, she asks them to the appropriate person and finds out pertinent information in a timely manner. There are many procedures and protocols to follow as a registrar within a counseling office, and Brandy has learned them all quickly. We are fortunate to have her in this position and can hardly believe she's only been on the job for a few months. Since nominating her, I've heard from countless staff members at Turner Middle School how incredible Brandy is at her new job. We did signs-of-suicide presentations in sixth and seventh grades so far this school year, and the survey at the end asked students to indicate trusted adults at the school. Nearly 20% of our students in those two grades selected Brandy as a trusted adult, proving how well she's built relationships with our students. She has become a tremendous asset to the Turner Middle School community, and we are incredibly grateful to have her on our team, and I'll make sure to give this to her when we get back to Turner tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Andrea.[853.42][853.45][applause] So last, but not least, I'm like, we're gonna do our Community Champion Awards. I'm going to ask Kim Iklysharen to come forward, and Kim nominated, this is from the Governor's Art Show, so we have representatives from the Thompson Valley Rotary, as well as the Loveland Rotary Club, so if the representatives would please come forward, and Kim will recognize.
Thank you, Dr. Schaefer. Through the Thompson Education Foundation, of course, one of the things that we do is we create a bridge between the community and the school district. And here at TSD and at TEF, we spend all of our time thinking about kids and how we can help kids, and it's pretty incredible when we have members of the community who step forward and they do the same thing. For the last, I'm sorry, has it been seven years? Seven, six? Going on seven years. The Governor's Art Show, which is an incredible show at the Loveland Museum that is put on by both Thompson Valley Rotary and Loveland Rotary, have dedicated a third of all of their proceeds to our Resiliency Fund for Unhoused Youth. So not only are they thinking about youth in our community, but they are thinking about our most vulnerable youth, and I thought that was worthy of recognition. And so I would like to just thank all the members here of the Governor's Art Show Committee, as well as their respective rotaries for supporting our youth, supporting our district, and thank you very much.[944.74][944.77][applause]
Thank you. So we're going to invite all of our award winners up, so staff, as well as our friends from the rotaries. We're gonna take a picture with you, if that's okay.
All right, ready? Let's see, Nancy, can you slide? That's great, yeah, go just that way a little bit for me. There you go, thanks. Go this way, that'll help. Okay, on, whoop. There you go. On three. One, two, three.
Okay, finally, is Theo Robison here this evening? Okay, Theo is here. Okay, so we are gonna move on to, as the board knows, we showcase and highlight a school each month at our board meeting. Tonight, we have Mountain View High School, and so I'm gonna have Theo Robison go ahead and introduce the school and the administrative team and staff.
So, greeting, Dr. Schaefer, Madam President, members of the board. I'm Theo Robison, Executive Director, Secondary Education. So I'm pleased tonight to be able to invite our Mountain View staff with their principal, Markey Ramirez, here to talk to you about their presentation for tonight.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to share some of the amazing things that are happening at Mountain View High School, and who better to talk about those amazing things but our students? So let me first introduce Dani Balier, who is going to speak. She is our LISA coordinator, our program coordinator at Mountain View High School. She's gonna catch you up a little bit on the fun stuff that's been happening this year, and then our students would like to share some of their stories.
Hi, nice to see you guys. Thank you, Mrs. Ramirez, board members, Dr. Schaefer. I'm honored to represent MVHS and the LISA program here this evening. Last year was the first year that I took on the coordinator position, and we are really, really proud as a LISA team of where the program is and where it's headed. I believe that we have a video ready to roll.
I was screaming down the halls, does this happen every day? Why does everything look the same? I just wanna find my classes, I just wanna find my place, or maybe LISA's what I'm looking for, to find my friendly face. I need a space to be myself, 'cause every other place feels so plain. Full of eccentricity, a welcome change of pace, or maybe LISA's what I'm looking for, to be my saving grace. I found my passion here, and it grows more and more. All I had to do was find that open door. Less confrontation and a strong foundation, maybe LISA's what I'm looking for, to find...
My favorite art-integrated project that we did in LISA so far was for geophysical, one of our finals. We took in a specific element from the periodic table and made it into like a superhero or a supervillain, and I think that was just a very, much more fun and interesting way to look at some relatively simple science subjects.
Just what I've been looking for, to be my saving grace. LISA's just what I've been looking for.
Me, the most beneficial thing that LISA has brought to the table within the arts is definitely for the finals week. I was super nervous for my first year of high school's finals, 'cause I've never done something that big, all those tests in every single class, it's a lot, but for LISA, it actually just gave me a bunch of, there's so many artistic challenges, I had to make my own business.
Hi, to me, LISA has been a great place for me to exhibit my creativity and be able to showcase a lot of the art skills that I like to use on a daily basis. I've been able to do a lot of projects that exist of me drawing and painting, as well as exploring other options such as creative writing and using a lot of my brain power to incorporate both academics and art, which has been a really great experience and something new and fun to learn.[1283.22][1283.25][music]
I need a space to be myself, 'cause every other place feels so plain.
Family.
Having a group of people that you know and feel comfortable with, and being able to push yourself both artistically and academically in a class.
Acceptance.
I say diverse.
Chaotic.
LISA is a creative outlet. Family. Acceptance.
Me, LISA is the ability to express myself without having to worry about what people around me are going to think.
When I think of LISA, I think of the relationships and the friendships that I have made through the program, and I think of how it has helped me with my high school transition, given me a bit of a smaller community to focus on after coming from a bit of a smaller middle school.
LISA, to me, is the ability to freely express yourself without having to worry about what your classmates think.[1355.66][1355.69][music]
So just a little side note, the music that was playing was a song that the LISA students created at the Fall Frolic two years ago, so we liked to, they wrote the music and then did all the lyrics, but some of the things that we're proud of as the LISA team, we've doubled all of our numbers over the last two years with our incoming freshmen. We increased teacher professional development, provided unique cultural experiences, as you saw, and then implemented quality arts integration, especially with the community here in Loveland. But most important aspect to remember about the LISA program at MVHS is that it is truly unique to the Thompson School District and the surrounding area. There is no other arts integration high school within the few hours. So I would like to speak for hours on how much this program means, but I would like to introduce five LISA students that we have here. Cade Prather is a freshman here at Mountain View.
Hello, my name is Cade Prather, as you said, and I'm a freshman at Mountain View. Thank you for allowing me here today. I wanna be honest with you, coming into high school, I was really nervous. It was, it was almost scary for me, 'cause, you know, I didn't, I didn't know how I felt about being around upperclassmen, and you've all heard the horror stories of them bullying the new people, the newbies, and it was a big school, you know, like, I didn't know, in middle school, I was with a tight net of classrooms, I didn't know how to walk around and find my classroom, so I'd like to talk about when I was younger, like in fifth or sixth grade, maybe, I took school a little more seriously and cared about my grades a little more than a lot of my friends, and it made me almost feel like a cast-out, almost alienated from a lot of my friends, because when I talked to them, they'd say, "Cade, you know, why, why are you focusing on your grades? They don't matter, they're not gonna matter in the long run." All that changed when I joined LISA. LISA surrounds me with active listeners and learners that not only, you know, celebrate me when I take class seriously, but also celebrate me when I get good grades and complete projects in class. It's a great community. LISA's empowered me to, you know, improve my social skills, it's as simple as that. Small talk is a huge thing that I've learned, making new friends, and sharpening my grades. I've never been so proud to say that I have a 4.0 GPA. Thank you.[1516.14][1516.17][applause] And public speaking, I would, in the beginning of freshman year, I would not have been comfortable with doing what I'm doing today. I'm proud of being a LISA student, and I feel like it's gonna make me become a better person in society when I get older.
Hi, I'm Gabby, Gabby Forbes, and my experience has been pretty similar to Cade's. When I was growing up, I also felt just a lot on my grades, and I've been surrounded by people that didn't really care about theirs, so integrating into LISA was really good for like surrounding myself with like a positive community, and it's really better for me to learn around people that actually are like encouraging me to learn, and the community is really important to me. Like, a long time ago, I was really nervous to speak in front of people, and I am really nervous right now, but the LISA classes that I took and like the type of arts that we do has really prepared me for that, and I feel a lot more confident speaking in front of you guys than I used to. I think that the arts is like really important to me, because it's a lot more about like how everything like makes me feel and what I learn from the situations than just like the facts that people want me to memorize, and, yeah, it's just really important to me, and I'm really looking forward to spending my next few years in high school in the LISA program, so, thank you.[1619.02][1619.05][applause]
Hi, my name is Hannah Coulson, I'm a sophomore, and for me, I would have to say that LISA has been the best experience that I could have had in high school so far. I went into eighth grade not really like that excited, 'cause all of my friends were going to different high schools, and I just didn't know, I had already been accepted into LISA at that point, I was really excited about it, but I didn't know what I was going to do. I went through freshman year, and I, not only I made some of the best friends, but I learned how to be academically creative. This year, I kinda sort of pivoted, and I started to hang out with some of my more like non-art-y friends, and I just did not feel that sense of belonging as if I did with LISA, and my teachers have been nothing but supportive. I, as well, also have a 4.0, and I, thank you.[1674.14][1674.17][applause] My teachers, such as Ms. Evans and Ms. Weens and all of them, they've just been completely amazing down this whole road, and I'm so thankful to be a LISA student and get the opportunities that I do every single day.[1687.74][1687.77][applause]
I'm a little short, I'm sorry, guys. Okay, hi, I'm Valentina Hernandez, I'm in junior at Mountain View, and LISA has been okay, well, more than okay, it's been great, actually. Yeah, sure, the projects are fun, and I mean, we do get to be creative, but what really makes LISA impactful is the teachers. It's not necessarily the program, it's the teachers. It's how they're so patient with us, because FYI, LISA kids talk so much, but, and they're always curious, like, we always wanna know everything. And in normal, I've been in normal classrooms, and most teachers are like, we're digressing, let's go back into the lesson, but with the LISA program, we're allowed to be weird, be funny, be, think outside the box, and that really contributed a lot to my intellectual growth, because it helped me question everything, from like how a bill is made to just, you know, how a cell works. But what's more impactful is the application, because, for example, my freshman year in civics, we had to create a board game on how a bill becomes a law, and first of all, that's amazing, because we, as to be like better citizens, we need to understand how our government works, and LISA has a certain class called LISA with an intro to economics, which not every, actually, only LISA kids have, and it, first of all, it taught me a lot how to be a better citizen, and second of all, it's just really fun. I created a very chaotic board game, but I digress. LISA has just impacted me so, so much. Plus, I met Ms. Balier, and I wouldn't be the same person without Ms. Balier, and I created a lot of friends. I'm still a little bit of an... of friends. Um, I'm still a little bit of an outcast because I'm like more of an AP kid. But still, LISA is always home. It always makes me feel safe and comfortable. And, um, I can't imagine like having a normal high school experience. I just, the LISA is just a huge and important and impactful thing. And, uh, thank you guys for, you know, letting the LISA program, uh, exist. Have a good night.
Hello, um, my name is Miriam Beer. I'm a senior at Mountain View. Um, I also love the visual arts and I love percussion. I was the head snare for this year's marching band, um, which has been so much fun, by the way. And people, I've asked, I've been asked this like a million times this year, like what does LISA mean to you? Because we've had, we've gone to middle schools to tell them about it. Um, we've had like our whole LISA, what was that? Like a LISA, LISA capstone thing? It was so fun. Um, and just everyone has always had so much fun. And people always ask, what does LISA mean to you? And I honestly feel like I couldn't tell you what LISA means to me because it's just been like such a community that I've never had in any other way. Um, in a lot of, like in my past, I've had, you know, like mediocre grades. Um, and I've also, you know, had a history of people looking at me and going, "Oh, I don't like you because you look weird." And I'm like, "Okay, thanks." And I just, I've never had that in LISA because the community in LISA is just like, it's just so different. And I've never been made fun of in LISA. I remember, I have a friend, her name is Cody, and our sophomore year, we would have, um, a LISA class at the end of the day. And at the beginning of that LISA class is when she would take off, take off all of her makeup because she felt like in every other class, she needed to have the makeup on for people to like her. And as soon as she got to the LISA class, then she felt like she could take that off because she was around people who, um, wouldn't be mean to her for just looking and being like how she is. And I've just had the most fun in LISA. I've had more fun in LISA than in any other class. And I, I just feel, I feel really strongly that I think everyone should have a LISA in their life to, you know, feel that sense of community. Thank you.
So, thank you all to Ms. Ballier and to our wonderful students for speaking and telling their stories tonight. They really are the best ambassadors for our school and the LISA program. So, thank you and good night.
Thank you so much, all of you. You kids inspire some really important events that are happening in our schools and we need to have more people hear about them. Yes, we got to do a picture.
You can't get away without a picture. Can we take a picture?
All right, slide in for me, everybody. Okay, all right. All right, on three. One, two, three. Good, thanks.
Yeah, it's warmer here. Or maybe it's because we're letting down so much. Okay, must be our turn now. All right, um, this is our evening for doing our board and committee reports. And I asked them to just think about a new committee because it's the, because we have new, um, officers, we also have new committees. And so we all, or most of us, changed, um, committees. And some of us gave up all of our old ones and have all new, some kept some. So, we're going to just give a little summary of what we're doing, if we've had any new information from some of the committees or not. So, I'm going to start. Denise, have you had a chance to do, to go into anything yet? Any committees? I didn't know where you are with yours.
So, my committee that I'm on, actually I met last week when I wasn't available, um, but it's the technology, advisory leadership council. Um, and the biggest thing that came out of that meeting was the overview of where, um, Thompson School District is, with putting multi-factor authentication on accounts. So, you all know, kind of pressing the code to make it into an accurate account. So, the district putting that in place is a huge step forward in terms of information security and, um, it's going to be all the help, it's going to teachers, board members, and others, going to the classified staff next, and then eventually to students. So, um, uh, it's, it's good to see as someone who works in IT, this school district also taking on these really important safeguards to information and, and privacy.
So, the, the three committees that I have been moved to, I, they really only have like three more meetings for the rest of the school year. So, what I thought I would do is talk about, um, DAC, which is the committee that I'm no, no longer on, and just really talk again about how the two years that I spent on it, I really enjoyed it. I think it was, it's a great committee. I've loved watching Dr. Schneider kind of grow into her role because, um, she was not the original leader of that, it was Don Huckabee. And I think it's important that we have the district accountability and advisory committee because the legislative intent is that it's really about a way to bring parents into the school district and get them engaged. And so for that, I think it's really a good group. I'd like to hope that it would keep growing. When I first took it over, it was at seventeen members and it's now at twenty-six, which you'll see tonight, on tonight's agenda. And love to see more parents join. Um, we need to know what parents think and we need to have them engaged and involved in the process. And for me, that's what DAC was all about. And I may still pop in occasionally because you guys were a great group. Thank you.
I'm a member of two committees. One is the master planning committee. And the master planning committee didn't meet in January, so I don't have a report for you. I'm also a member of the Colorado Association of School Boards Legislative Relations Committee. That's a lot of words. Um, that's a committee, um, with, or on which I meet with representatives from around the state of Colorado. Uh, we had our first meeting, uh, last Friday. And this is a committee that I report on at each of our study sessions. So, um, no report actually tonight for me on either of my committees, but, uh, you will hear from me soon and later on.
Both of my committees have met. So, um, my new committees are Family Pi and CAC. So, Family Pi, we met, um, Pi is partnership and education. Um, and so we met on January ninth at the Early Childhood Center at Stansberry. We reviewed the findings of the class system, which is the classroom assessment scoring system. It's an observational instrument that assesses the quality of teacher-child interactions in center-based preschool classrooms. Um, they look at the three domains, um, that support children's learning and children's development, emotional support, classroom organization, and instructional support. The results were off the charts in all three domains for our Early Childhood Center. Um, and Stansberry is recognized as a regional leader and others from, um, different programs and centers come. And when I talk regional, I think it was like ten states, so not just Colorado. Um, so, you know, we're pretty amazing. Um, and we also talked, we had our training from Jenny Linder, um, on Head Start Finances in the Early Childhood Program. And Jenny's the grants coordinator at Stansberry. Um, we reviewed the P card, the purchasing card report and the accounts, um, and the cost allocation and funding for the three categories there, special ed, head start, and universal pre-K. Just as the entire TSD budget is transparent, um, and available to the public, so is all of that financial information. Um, CAC is the Special Education Advisory Committee. We met on January tenth. Um, they began the meeting by, um, reviewing the operating procedures that they had updated and those were approved. Um, Maria Gabriel from Equity Diversity and Inclusion Department provided us on updates on the district's unified programming to support inclusion and belonging for all. Lazlo updated CAC on the CDE facilitated onsite. And then he also presented CAC, um, the state of the district. Um, and that was pretty impressive. Lots and lots of glows and of course, there's some areas to grow and we discussed that. So, um, that's the end of my report.
So, uh, I am on, again, on the Federal Relations Network and they met, but the conversation was around a trip, um, planning for Washington DC and I am not going. So, I, I was thinking, I could skip that, that's just going to make me sad. Um, and so I'll, I'll dive into the Security and Emergency Management Committee, which is a committee that I've been on. Um, we met last week and we really dived in to, um, really talking about communications at every level when it comes to, uh, anything with safety related. So, we used examples of, you know, when there's a law enforcement presence that's somewhere close to a school that impacts the school, uh, how are we getting that word out to students? And, you know, especially at like high schools when there's open campus and you're trying to catch students who may be offsite at Taco Bell as they come back. And how do we inform our neighbors, um, parents, caregivers, uh, staff? And how do we debrief on, um, what worked and what didn't? And, um, I was really lucky because I got to sit with transportation, which is kind of a big deal right now, thinking about, you know, how, um, how everything, uh, is impacted by how we move around. And, uh, just hearing the perspective of, of like how seriously they take safety. And even, obviously, right, you're driving a school bus full of students. So, obviously, that's really, really important all the time. But their, you know, really their role in some of these incidents and, and having to pick up kids on demand when something happens or know where to go when something changes because of something, um, was an interesting perspective. And there's a lot of other groups, uh, in the district who are all, who are similar, right? That it, it's easy to like think, oh, why would that matter? And yet, every single person who is involved in our schools really does have a role in safety and needs to be informed, um, and stay updated at the right level to know what to do and what matters. And so I'm, I'm really grateful that we took a deep dive into that one thing because communications can really be impacted by what we know and what we don't know. So, it's good stuff.
Thank you. The committees that I'm on now are Curriculum Improvement Council and that will be one that meets in the fall. I'm on Professionals Concerns Committee and that meets monthly. And then I'm also on the Thompson Education Foundation Committee. And, um, we were supposed to meet last night, but we didn't because of snow. So, I will find out more about that in, in February. I also wanted to just kind of update you on the executive session that we had. We were in executive session for, um, the first hour we were here. And the purpose was to offer Dr. Schaefer his, um, mid-year evaluation where we provided for him some glows of what we see working really well within the district and some offering suggestions of things that we can do, um, as a district that will, um, enhance where we are. So, that completes all of our board and committee reports. And I turn it over now to Dawn, if she would please read the, um, protocol for public speaking.
Before we do that, if I could just share one other thing about the committee reports in general, that the, uh, the public might be interested in. Um, as board members, we don't chair the committees that we're on. We serve as representatives or liaisons from the board to the committee. And the committees are composed almost exclusively by members of the community. And the chair of the committee is, uh, very often a parent or another community member. So, I didn't want to leave you with the impression that we're in charge of the committees that, uh, on which we serve. We represent the board on those committees. Yes, correct. We're also not voting members.
Yes. Uh, so because the board wants to hear the viewpoints of the public and also needs to conduct its business in an orderly and efficient manner, it will schedule time during its regular board meetings for brief comments and questions from the public. The board will set a time for public participation prior to the business portion of the meeting. The time for each speaker will be limited to three minutes and each individual will only be recognized once. If there is a large number of speakers, the board may elect to take comments for one hour before the business meeting and conclude public comment after the business meeting. Public comments and questions at a regular meeting may deal with any topics related to the board's conduct of the schools. Speakers may offer such criticism of school operations and programs as concerns them, but are encouraged to exercise their speech rights responsibly. Personnel matters will be discussed in executive session. Um, I'll call you up by name and then, um, I will also start the timer when you start speaking, which will light up the green light right there. And, um, when you have thirty seconds left, it'll go to yellow, it'll make a little noise. And then at the end of your time, it will start flashing red and it'll keep beeping at you. So, first up, we have Anne Bradbury.
Dr. Schaefer, board members and staff, thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. After hearing all those positive stories about the LISA program and some of the positive things, there are so many positive things going on. However, that being said, I'm going to address something that's tough. This is tough. I've been doing research and, um, I know that the mental health issues and suicide rates in the state of Colorado have shot up. And I know for Northern Colorado and the school districts, it's on the rise. That concerns me. I am a, uh, community member here for over thirty-one years, raised our boys here, they all went to the, to the schools here in Loveland. And we never, ever worried as parents about this. So, I'm hearing more and more of it. So, yeah, there are kids that are falling through the cracks, basically. And I, I wanted to address it because I think this, it's a serious problem. I know that the mental health issues are dealt with at school and that there, there are staff that take care of kids that have problems. However, that being said, I know that a lot of these kids, they don't, they don't talk to anybody. They just are quiet, they're lonely, they're sad, they're feeling hopeless. And so thus, I see the, the rates have gone up quite a bit. It really troubles me to think that kids are feeling that way because they should go to school and feel safe at school. They need to know that they're in a very good environment and a healthy one. And I, and I don't want to think that the theme here is that suicide is starting to feel normal to some kids. And I believe families are super busy right now, parents are busy working. Sometimes they don't come home and talk to their, the kids don't talk to their parents. So, after looking into this, I know that there's some confusion in the schools. And some of that is identity. Some kids don't even know who they are right now. They're dealing with transgender issues, LGBTQ, all of those things. Let's face it, it's, it's real. Uh-oh. Okay. So, anyway, my thought here is, we got to do something about it. I know we have counselors, we need more help. Reach out, here's a suggestion, let's reach out to the community more. Faith-driven organizations, churches. So, my goal as a community member and all my grandkids are homeschooled. So, I care about the kids, I care about the future generation. And I'm seeing some problems. So, thank you, I hope you address this. Thank you for your time.
Sharon Penny?
Dr. Schaefer, members of the board. I read a recent newspaper article describing the angst some students are feeling when they are being taught to view their friends through a different lens. What lens? I hate to use the words, but cultural Marxism is the lens that has been taught in state teachers' colleges since the nineteen fifties and has been slowly and quietly filtered down into high schools and elementary schools. What is it? What is it? A cultural Marxism places everyone in groups based on color or minority status. Then, these groups are brought into opposition with each other by calling them either privileged oppressors or underprivileged victims. Standards for current Colorado Social Studies curriculum tell students that every event in American history needs to be viewed through the lens of oppressor-oppressed groups, and one group is constantly singled out to be damned. What does this, what does that do to students in that group? Should children be made to look at one another and history that way? Do we want eight-year-olds eyeing their classmates as being either part of the good guys or the bad guys? Do we want middle school students to suddenly look at their long-term friends in a new, suspicious way? I have four great-grandchildren here in Loveland, who are a mix of three races. No one in our family cares, and I don't want their teachers or their classmates to care either. They are little Americans with rights recorded in our founding documents. All men are created equal. Those are beautiful words, equality, not equity. Equity is a current buzzword and is incompatible with equality. They are not the same, I know you know this. What would happen if every TSD classroom began to teach the great worth and equality of all students? Where teachers would say, each of you are gifted, and we are going to give you all the academic tools that you need to develop your gifts. Marxism does not do this. It purposely divides. It is legalized discrimination. I'm guessing that this is not what you really want for Thompson classrooms, but it is where the Colorado Education Association stands today. I don't know how much TSD is under the thumb of the CEA, but I have four questions. Do school districts have any autonomy?
Please wrap up, thank you. David Cook.
Thank you. David Cook, Center for Government Accountability. On January 5th, Cal Thomas wrote an article regarding how the Ivy League colleges put out people who rioted for a group of folks in the Middle East, who slaughtered people, who cut off the heads of babies, who raped. The Ivy League did this, the top schools in the, in the United States. A study was done in the 80s that showed that before, in the 40s, 50s, America had the top education in the world. By the 60s and 70s, it had dropped to 18th, and by, or the 2000s, and right after the 2000s, we were at the bottom of the list in education. However, we're at the top of the list in cost. The, uh, government did a study that before 1963, all the good things were happening. Divorces were going down, crime was going down, ATTC scores were going up. 1963, that all reversed. Why? Because in 1963, an illegal decision by the United States Supreme Court changed the religion being taught in the schools from Christianity to the religion of secular humanism. The reason is simple. It's what's being taught, and it's what's being taught at the top, and it's what's being taught all the way down, including here, to the bottom. Government statistics prove it, society proves it, and the better-educated people in other nations prove it. So, last year, I presented a redress of grievance with, open-ended, a year ago, to this board to change, according to the law, in Article One, Article Three, Sentence One of the Ordinance of 1787. Nothing happened, nothing changed. So, I'm back now with a little more. You have received, and passed out to you, another redress of grievance. It details all that needs to be said at this point. On the back of that is the, uh, legal, the legal, uh, reasons for what it says. Now, here's the way this works. If this board continues to teach secular humanism, communism, the rest of that, that everybody laughs at and then teaches it in these schools, then this board will have the Ordinance of 1787 on their hands, but also the Declaration of Independence Prime Statement of Law, which states that if any form of government, which includes you, becomes destructive of the end stated, it's a right of the people to alter and abolish.
Please wrap up.
This will be presented also to the City Council.
Thank you.
And there are copies back there for anybody that needs it.
Thanks. Have a good evening.
Okay. And there are no phonons. Right? Okay. We're good. All right. Now comes our action consent items, and there's a long list of these, and what we're going to do is I'm gonna read through the list, and then we will do a vote. Is there anything on here that somebody needs to have, um, addressed first? No? Okay. These are all items that we have spent time with in our study session, so we know the history behind them, the purpose, whoa, the purpose behind, um, behind them. And so, what we're going to do is there's, there are policies that have just tiny little word changes that had to occur, uh, maybe changing the name, or the way that the, uh, person who's in charge of it in the district, so just as a name change, basically, is what almost all of these were, the first 15 or 16 of them, I think, were that way. And then, we have a couple others. And so, I'm gonna go down the long list of, of these, and then, at the end, Dr. Schaefer is going to read the proclamation for us. So, I am going to, uh, just bear with me, this is a long, a long list, like 20 items, so hang in there. And we'll vote on them as a group. 6.1 is the approval of personnel extra duty coaching recommendations. 6.2 is the approval of donations over 1,000. 6.3 is the approval of second reading policy AC, non-discrimination, equal opportunity. Stu, would you read the donations? Can you find them on there? Thank you. 6.4, the approval of second reading exhibit AC dash E dash one, non-discrimination, equal opportunity. 6.5, approval of the second reading AC dash E dash two complaint form that goes with that above. 6.6, the approval of the second reading regulation AC dash R, non-discrimination, equal opportunity, complaint and compliance process. 6.7, approval of the second reading policy GBA, open hiring, equal opportunity employment. 6.8, approval of the second reading policy GDE, GDF, classified and non-licenced administrative, professional, technical, staff recruiting and hiring. 6.9, approval of the second reading policy JB, equal educational opportunities. 6.10, approval of the second reading policy JBB, sexual harassment. 6.11, approval of the second reading policy JF, admission and denial of admission. 6.12, approval of the second reading policy JFBA, JFBB, choice enrollment. 6.13, approval of second reading policy JII, student concerns, complaints and grievances, and R, which is the student concerns, complaints and grievances. 6.14, approval of the second reading regulation JIIR, student concerns, complaints and grievances. I told you there was a long list of these. 6.15, approval of dis, oh, those are the lists of the grievances, okay? Now, these are changes, so you'll, you'll hear something different now. 6.15 is the approval of District Advisory and Accountability Committee, which Nancy was talking about, DAC, that's the membership from, um, forms, membership for 2023, 2025? Okay, for, uh, school years. 6.16, approval of the Loveland Classical Schools Charter Extension. 6.17, approval of the Submittal of Building Excellent Schools Today, that's the best grant. 6.18 is the approval of project budget and associated contract over, and it says 110,000 on our bulletin, but according to FEG policy, it's really over 100,000, so it's a just change in the amount, um, that we're approving. And that's the shelter, the youth shelter. 6.19, approval of the proposed 2023, 2024 amended budget. And 6.20 would be the approval of the proclamation declaring January as National School Board Recognition Month. And I, Stu, are you able to find it?
Yeah.
Stu's gonna read the donations that I mentioned right up here, because we approved the donations of over a thousand, um, a thousand dollars. Okay, thank you.
Sure. Uh, donations that the school district receives need to be in alignment with STRIVE 2025, our strategic plan. 4.2 states assets are properly inventoried, maintained, and used appropriately without waste, and 4.3, provide transparency in use of resources. Donations over $1,000 are presented to the board to assure transparency and to assure that the assets are used appropriately. The purpose is, school board policy states that donations over $1,000 need to be approved by the Board of Education, and so, I'll now read the two donations that we're gonna be discussing, um, or actually not discussing, that we're gonna be voting to approve this evening. A donation of $1,720 to Mountain View High School for the wrestling program from the Danny Juarez Memorial Fund, and $1,500 donation to Mountain View High School for the baseball program for batting cage from Sam Holt via the Blackbaud Giving Fund.
Thank you, Stu. And Dr. Schaefer?
School Board Recognition Month proclamation. Whereas the mission of public schools is to meet the diverse educational needs of all children, and to empower them to become competent, productive contributors to a democratic society in an ever-changing world, and whereas local school board members are committed to children and believe that all children can be successful learners, and that the best education is tailored to the individual needs of the child, and whereas local school board members work closely with parents, educational professionals, and other community members to create the educational vision we want for our students, and whereas local school board members are responsible for ensuring the structure that provides a solid foundation for our school system, and whereas local school board members are strong advocates for public education, and are responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public, and the public's expectations to the district. Now, therefore, we declare our appreciation to the members of the Thompson School District Board of Education, and proclaim January 2024 as School Board Recognition Month in Thompson School District. Please join us in recognizing the dedication and hard work of local school board members, and in working with them to mold an education system that meets the needs of both today's and tomorrow's children.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
All right. I, um, have read and shared with all of you the whole long list of things that we're approving, so I will take, um, a motion to approve.
I move.
Thank you, Nancy.
Second.
And Dawn, Nancy and Dawn, for approving that long list of items. Laura Lee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessum.
Nancy Rumfeld.
Aye.
Thank you, Laura Lee. All right. That concludes all of our action consent items, and we now.
Could I?
Of course.
Offer some clarification again for members of the public who are here and, and watching at home. I think a lot of times, because we're so familiar with what we do, we assume that you also understand what we do. This long list of, uh, changes to policy, et cetera, we saw for the first time before our, uh, recent study session. So, we had an opportunity to look at that information, to submit questions to district administration. We discussed these at the study session, uh, with the knowledge that we can't vote to approve things at the study session, and so, we received, uh, this entire, uh, batch of information again prior to tonight's meeting. So, the board has had three different opportunities to review and to ask questions over the material. Um, many of us have submitted questions, received answers, uh, et cetera. I just think it's important that the public understands, when Barb reads this long list, that we're not just giving carte blanche approval, that we've had the opportunity to review these, uh, in this case, three different times. And so, just as a point of clarification, and as, uh, the evening goes on, if there's anything else that I'm, that I think that perhaps we know that you don't know, um, I'll interject some explanation.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move into our discussion items. And the first item for our discussion is the ITS Student Intern Update. So, Kelly.
So, Dr. Schaefer, Madam President, and TSD board members, I want, I have the pleasure of introducing some people behind me, who are gonna talk to us about the TSD intern program. These are the people who make it happen. I've got a few slides that just talk at the beginning, but then I will bring them up. So, our intern program supports STRIVE 2025 by providing, you know, positive student outcomes, by making sure that we do modern and opportunities for our students to use instructional technology, to assist in recruitment and retain of staff. You'll learn about, a little bit about how we've used this program to help fill positions in TSD. We have continuous improvement and a growth mindset by giving our students opportunities to learn about how to fix technology, and we've investigated in compensation and benefits in Thompson School District, so we're competitive by using our students and creating that pipeline. We have a great stewardship of resources by providing students, as we are the business, that we are providing opportunities for them to learn how to work within ITS. So, of course, we're also connected to STRIVE 2025, and of course, the Portrait of a Graduate, by empowering our TSD students to learn and grow using innovative technology today. So, I'm gonna introduce Andy Larkins, who started this program. Andy is our, uh, manager of client services, and I'm gonna let him start.
Good evening, Dr. Schaefer, board members, Madam President. Uh, thank you for having us here tonight to speak with you. We are very excited about the program that, uh, we are running, uh, that I can find, we are the only program in the nation that is running things quite the way we are. It's a, uh, statistic I'm very proud of. On the slides here, we have an increase in devices, we have an increase in repairs because of the more devices we have. We do not have an increase in staff. So, from ITS's perspective, uh, this is very much a win-win situation, because we get additional staff, and our students get, uh, more enriched education to go with, uh, that. This goes along with recruit and retain, uh, because we've created a pathway. Uh, you start as an intern in our high schools, uh, if you're really interested, uh, you, uh, can become a paid apprentice, so the interns get course credit, the apprentices get course credit, and they get an hourly wage, and, uh, we've had some apprentices also go on to become full-time employees. Uh, intern program growth. So, uh, this program started, uh, around 2012, 2013 school year. Uh, it started with four students from birth at high coming up, and just saying, hey, we're really interested in technology, would like to help out in the summer, is there anything we can do? From there, uh, seed got planted, and it's kind of grown, and I'm gonna let Rebecca talk about, uh, the current growth, because she's really focusing on that right now.
Good evening, board. My name's Rebecca Beckett, I am the ITS Client Services Coordinator, and one of my main focuses is on growing the internship program. As you can see here, we've grown it, uh, just in this year, we started in semester one with eight interns across the high schools.
Thanks.
And starting in semester two, we're up to seventeen interns across all four high schools. I have been able to participate in all of the high schools at their promotional events for eighth graders, for incoming freshmen, either at the beginning of the year or the middle of the year, the events that they have, we host a table. We put out kind of like the guts of a laptop or a Chromebook, so it kind of piques their interest. And you'll almost know right away if you're like, does this interest you? And they're like, uh-uh. You're like, okay, it's not for you, that's okay, it's not everyone's company technology. We've also are going to be going to the T C C with the Work-Based Learning Group to do the eighth grade fair that they have, and then also the W B L fair that they're coming up both in February at T C C. We've created new flyers with Q R codes that are posted up around the buildings at all of the high schools, including Ferguson. And we meet with our counselors and get them interested too. We get a lot of word of mouth from other interns, as well as a lot of counselors being able to talk to the students when they say, I don't know what to do with this off-period, and they're like, well, are you interested in this? Do you like working on your hands? And they kind of get a pathway to us. What's interesting about our program is it's not just a class you can sign up for. We want to make it as close to a work-based learning opportunity as possible. So they fill out an application, then they have to do an interview, and then they have to wait to hear back if they get invited in the program, or they'll get tips on what they can do better next time if they don't get invited in. Like I mentioned a little bit earlier, we are partnering with all of the high schools, so we meet with them on a fairly regular basis, especially near registration times. We also are working with the T S D Work-Based Learning Group, Susan Scott and Tierney Laney. I don't know if they're.
They were here.
Okay, got it. And then the C T E, our Career Technical Education Group, so that's Andy Stevens. We work with him in making sure that it's as close to the C T E pathways as possible. And like I said, we do work with our high school leadership, whether that's the principals, the A Ps, the media specialists, the counselors, to make sure that it's working for each individual school, individualized, but also as a very, across the board, so everyone gets the same type of opportunity. And then Vivacity Tech is one of our vendors. We work with them, they have a online program called the S R A or Student, oh my gosh. Thank you, Student Repair Academy. All of the interns go through that within their first quarter to get certified as a repair technician.
All right.
And.
We'd like to introduce Hayden Kellogg.
Yep, one of our interns.
Hi, I'm Hayden Kellogg, just like the cereal. I guess the best part about the internship is like Rebecca was saying, is it's like a actual I T job, you know? Going to repair Chromebooks, you get to actually go to classrooms and help with tickets there. Same thing, the ticketing system, it's like an actual, it's like your real tech, I guess, I T tech specialist. And it's just, I like it, I have fun. I meet a lot, I met a lot of people through, I have good friends from that too. I also had an opportunity to do a paid internship over the summer. So I went into the S S C building and actually helped repair there. And that was more of that kind of apprenticeship, like job-type thing. But because of that, I've been doing it, I still want to pursue, want to be apprenticeship one day. And I like it, it's fun, it's cool. The actual techs that work there that come in, they're great. They, you know, really taught me a bunch of stuff, learned a bunch of stuff, something I want to pursue after high school. Yeah?
And which school are you at?
Oh, Loveland High School.
Are you a student there also?
Yeah, I'm a junior.
All right. So benefits to our students, as you heard from Hayden, excuse me, also include public speaking, as Hayden has just done. We also presented at Inedco and the Case Conference this summer. We've been approved to present at I S T this coming summer, and we will bring students and did bring students. So an opportunity to get up in front of people such as yourself and community members and present what they're learning. Work-based learning, hands-on, actual, in-the-dirt work, professional experiences and professional networking. So students leave the program with items to put on their resume and professional contacts. I've provided many letters of references for students to get jobs. And industry standard certifications to go along with that high school diploma to really give that education an extra punch.
So for the future goals and dreams of this program, we're hoping to have a total of seventy-two interns through the district, which would be two per eight blocks at the four major high schools, plus one per each eight block at Ferguson High School. They just have a smaller population, so, yeah. You can see on the slide there, that's what their certification looks like when they go through the Vivacity Student Repair Academy. They get that when they complete, as well as an electric screwdriver, just to say, thank you for completing this, thanks for getting that work done, and here's a tool that can help you to continue to be successful. It is, it's very useful, yes. Our student help student is the norm, that's our norm now, it's what our norm is to continue with this program too, is to really build up that community and knowing that they can rely on each other to fix the technology that comes up, as well as relying on, or having the staff rely on our students too, and build that community and that relationship together. We are just now dipping our toes, very, very new to this right now, very dipping our toes into doing a pilot at the middle school level. We're doing it at Peak View Academy right now, they're in their first quarter of that. We're working with them on figuring out how that looks for a middle school level and how it could continue through those programs before we make it official and potentially bring it out to all the other middle schools.
Yeah, our vendor Vivacity has successfully had middle school students complete the S R A and gain that certificate. And we said if they can do it, we can too, so we are piloting that. We have a few other ideas on how to expand this in the next couple of years as well. So I look forward to standing in front of you again in the future and sharing those dreams with you. Hayden, is there anything else you'd like to share with the board?
You guys should totally do the middle school thing.
All right.
That's one thing I like about it. Got to it early, a lot of people don't get to doing that until after high school.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
So, board members, do you have any questions? Nancy, go ahead.
I think this program is great because it helps kids see beyond high school, what they can actually, that they can actually make money with what they're learning, which is always good. And this may already be happening, so if it is, I'm sorry, but can this be used as a model for, throughout the rest of the district? Meaning Gordon needs help so he could actually leave the building like maybe before six P M. And so I'm thinking he could use an intern, and who doesn't want to learn about accounting? Or Bill over there, H R, I know he needs somebody to keep him in line. And then Houseman, he needs help with, you know, the whole Facebook, Instagram, so, and teachers. So it seems like maybe we could do interns for H R, business admin, accounting, even teachers. Because if it's helping these young students see that there's a career for them and they can experience, then why wouldn't we find a way to put it throughout the rest, as well as the apprentice opportunities? So I think you're blazing a path, and I would love to see us do more.
So to answer that question a little bit, we are in talks about bringing it to other venues right now. If Tierney was here, she'd be able to talk about how we have the Future Ed, which is an apprenticeship program that is going on for the teachers in the education. And so kiddos that are wanting to go into the teacher avenue, they have an apprenticeship through that. And Tierney and I are working pretty hard, and our fellow people, Susan Scott and, yep, here we go, Andy.
I'll dive in. Good evening, Dr. Schaefer, Madam President, and the Board of Education. I'm Andy Stevens, I'm the Director of Current Technical Education. And my team oversees the Future Educator Program that we are developing and also works in lockstep with our I T S colleagues in the I T intern and apprentice programs. We are developing for launch next year, a new educator pathway program. And that program is going to offer students district-wide an opportunity to earn not only high school credit, but concurrent enrollment credit through a program called Teacher Cadet.
Yep.
It will be housed at Loveland High School. And then ultimately, those students, when they have successfully completed Teacher Cadet, which includes both a semester of classroom work and then a semester of practicum work, they will then be prepared to enter into an apprenticeship, very much like our friends in I T S. And then ultimately, our hope, as Nancy, you pointed out, is that we could potentially model an apprenticeship program for those future educators, much like what we've done in I T S, to help grow our own talent. And partner with H R to identify these students who are passionate about education. There's also state-level programming through what's called the T R A program, which is a concurrent enrollment program where students get the first two years of their college education paid for, very much like the Ascent program, if you're familiar with that, with concurrent enrollment. So instead of one year for Ascent, T R A is two years, and it's specifically geared towards teacher preparation and helps those students who have said, yes, I'm passionate about being an educator, I want to be in the classroom, really jumpstart those opportunities so that districts like ours can really start growing our own talent for the future. So that is in the works, and just like Andy Larkins said, I look forward to being back to share more about that next year.
Thank you.
How, how young can we take future bus drivers?
Boy, I'm not familiar with C D E. Dawn, what's that, what's C D L license this? Nineteen.
Dang it. That's, that's a few people, that's not like nothing. We'll take every nineteen-year-old.
But Dawn, I will say, you know, we do have an automotive pathway in the district at Thompson Valley High School. And I do think there's opportunity there for those students that express, maybe not necessarily to drive, but absolutely to get into our transportation department as mechanics, to start working on those diesel engines, all of our fleet of, you know, facilities, vehicles. And so again, in this same model, how can we build apprenticeship-type opportunities for those students that complete that program and say, yes, I want a future in auto mechanics, and now we're growing our own talent? So another opportunity.
Thank you very much.
And this is why we partnered with you.
Yeah.
Just notwithstanding everything that Andy said, I do want to, again, just really illuminate the work that, you know, Rebecca, Andy, Kelly, and our students are doing. Truly, we are a state and national leader in this area. I have no doubt that we'll have seventy-two and more. You know, to, this is really very exciting. And it's really helping our students see a future, and really a purpose behind their education, so that it prepares them, gives them the skills they need right now, honoring their talents, compensating them not only with credit and credentials, but salary, quite honestly, and getting kids really excited about their future. And it's a win-win for the district because again, it provides a necessary and needed service for us. And so again, I couldn't be more proud, and it's really special what we're doing.
So thank you all very much.
Thank you for having us.
Before you all sit down, just one other thing quickly. I don't need to explain anything, and I don't actually have a question, but Andy Stevens, the board heard from a young man who's a student at Loveland High and part of the cadet program there at a recent meeting at Centennial High School, or Centennial Elementary, pardon me. And I think we were all really inspired by what he had to say. The other thing that I want to point out is that the Thompson School District always likes to recognize homegrown talent. And the reason that I'm bringing this up is that we have many staff in our district who are products of the Thompson School District, one of whom is Andy Larkins, who's a product of the Thompson School District and of Berthet High School. And I think it's a credit to our district when students decide to come back here to work and make contributions in a variety of ways, and so I just wanted to mention that too.
So Rebecca is as well.
Oh, I, I'm sorry, Rebecca, I didn't, I didn't know that, so that's terrific.
All right, we are moving on to our next topic, which is two thousand twenty-three graduation and dropout rates. So hello, Melissa.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, and Dr. Schaefer. Tonight, we have some good news to present to you regarding our newly released graduation rates. And I have Theo Robeson, our Executive Director of Secondary Education, and Carrie Bartman, our Director of Assessment and Evaluation, who have collaborated tightly on this presentation to provide you some, some good news tonight. So I'm going to let Theo get us started.
It's a good night, I tell you. So I'm Theo Robeson, Executive Director of Secondary Education for Thompson School District. So in T S D, we're striving to eliminate disparities in student achievement, growth, graduation, behavioral outcomes, and education opportunities in student groups. In addition, assuring all students graduate on time, the four-year graduation rate. These efforts align with focus area one of Strive Two Thousand Twenty-Five Student Achievement. So on our four-year graduation rate, this means the number of students receiving a regular diploma in four years or less upon entering high school. Four years of an on-time graduation rate based on anticipated year of graduation, which is considered the A Y G cohort by school and by district. Our rate is ninety-one point one, which surpasses the state average of eighty-three point one percent. In this next set of graphs, you're able to see our graduation rate for males is higher than the state average by eight point three percent. Our female graduation rate is higher than the state by seven point seven percent. We also see a five point one difference between our T S D male and female students. We also see that we've been able to maintain or increase our graduation rate in each of the race categories that you see in front of you, except for in one area, which is two or more races, which decreased by eight point eight percent. Within these next set of bar graphs, I would like you to see that we have increased graduation rate in each student group. Two major celebrations are the increase in the, in the high, I'm sorry, the highly mobile graduation rate, which increased by fourteen point five percent, and our English learner grad rate, which increased by thirteen point two percent. In these graphs, we're able to see our graduation rate gains in each of the four comprehensive high schools. Loveland High School, Mountain View High School, Thompson High School, I'm sorry, Thompson Valley High School, and Berthet High School. We also seen gains in graduation rates at our alternative school, Ferguson. On this next set, it focuses on our dropout rates. Here, we're able to see that the dropout rates for students through seventh through twelfth grade. A dropout is a student who leaves our school without enrolling into another school or education program. Our T S D dropout rate is one point six percent, which is lower than the state's average of two point one percent. This next set of graphs, you're able to see that our dropout rate is lower than the state average for males and for females. Also, you're able to see a point four percent decrease in our male dropout rate from twenty-two to twenty-three school year. We also see a point one increase in our female dropout rate. On this next graph, we're able to see that we've been able to maintain or decrease our dropout rate in all race categories, except for again, students with two or more races, which increased by point five percent. Our bar graphs here show that we have continued work that we need to accomplish for our students with disabilities or highly mobile students when it comes to accessing other programs that can support them with obtaining their diploma or G E D. On this next set of bar graphs, I'd like to point out, the Ferguson High School team has been tracking and monitoring their dropout rate as a key indicator of their students' post-secondary workforce readiness. Over time, improvements, efforts, staffing priorities and decisions, and programming improvements have contributed to the successful engagement and re-engagement of students who are at risk dropping out of high school. Ferguson, as the Thompson School District's only alternative education campus, is tasked to serving a population of students at increased risk of dropping out, and this data further proves that the school is providing quality, alternative education experience for the students they serve. Here, we'd like to show some successes that we've had over the last year within our graduation rates. So here, you're able to see fourteen point five percent graduation rate increase for our highly mobile students, thirteen point five percent increase for our black and African-American students, an increase. an increase of thirteen point two percent for our English learners. Our Hispanic and Latin students have increased to five point six percent in their graduation rate. Our gifted and talented graduation rate increased by three point nine percent. And our overall grad rate increased by three point five percent. And we've also had increases in our student with disabilities grad rate by three point three percent. So as we further develop our guaranteed viable curriculums across T S D and we further develop a strong tier-one instructional framework and institute more professional learning regarding professional learning communities across the system, we expect to continue to see decreases in the disparity gaps and we hope to see them diminish. Some of the current work that we're engaged in, thanks to our T S D instructional vision, centers around data literacy work, helping unpack the professional standards in our teachers' evaluations in order to have more calibration across the system and best practice, and also the work in inclusive and supportive culture was centered around our building implementation teams work and with the professional development that we've been providing with cooperative learning, All Learners Network for Math, professional learning communities through Solution Tree. We hope to keep seeing increases in our graduation rate as we strive to see a hundred percent graduate here in T S D. Are there any questions?
Questions? Start down here, questions?
Not a question, but I just wanted to let you know that I sobbed when I looked through this today. I'm just so happy to see that all of the other work that we do, you know, all the other presentations, like, is showing up and ultimately, you know, the final product of what we're producing, right? Which is graduates. And it's amazing to see so many successes and so many celebrations. I'm especially grateful for that lower dropout rate at Ferguson. That's amazing. And one year especially, like, that's honing in on something special. But there's a lot of stuff in there that brought me joy. So I want you to know that because it's awesome.
Thank you, thank you. Testament to all the hard work of our staff members, our students across the system, and all the opportunities you've given us through professional learning and curriculum across the system as well as the board and superintendent. So we really appreciate all the work in the whole system.
Yeah, I would just say here, here, in regard to that, that this is great news and I'll echo what Don said. When I saw the result of the dropout rate at Ferguson drop or decline from ten point six percent to one point seven percent, I thought, what an achievement and what an opportunity for celebration. And so in regard to the graduation rate in general, congratulations, yes. First, to our students, to our parents, to the staff, to the community that values education.
Yes, indeed, yes, indeed.
I just would like to thank the staff for all of the hard work that they've done and tenacity to stick with this and the support that everybody at our district office has helped with keeping it going. So thank you.
So one thing I wanted to add, too, is that, so when I went back and looked at the graduation rates from two thousand twenty twenty-three, so T S D had a ninety percent graduation rate in two thousand five, which was the only other year that we've had over a ninety percent graduation rate. And this ninety-one point one is second highest in the metro area in Colorado as well. Or fourth highest, I'm sorry. I'm thinking about a couple of years down the road, we're number one. I meant to say we're fourth highest.
Yay for us.
Repeat what repeat what you just said.
So in this Denver metro area, Thompson School District has the fourth highest graduation rate. I think they have about twenty school districts on that list and we're number four.
Anybody else?
First, just just so for the public's benefit, I did submit a question, which I know Dr. Melissa Snyder and her team's working on. Just wondering, what is the college remediation rate for just the colleges around here? I know you can't know for the whole country, but. And then do we track, similar to what I know Laszlo does over in special services? Where do the high school graduates go? Do they go to trade, college, military? What kind of, where do they, where do they go?
So thank you for that, Nancy. So I have some answers for that. So so one of the things before I share this data is I want to share with you. So two years ago, when we moved to Exello, we stopped using the National Clearinghouse as we made that purposeful transition to Exello. We're going to look forward this year at going back into the National Clearinghouse so we can have more accurate, up-to-date matriculation rate data. So we believe that there's some increases that we would see if we were still using that system. So we're working currently to increase that or get that system back into place. But what I want to share with you, so from twenty twenty-two class, out of all one thousand eighty-eight graduates, we had a hundred and forty-four students, which is thirteen point three percent of those students go to a two-year community college. Then we had, we had eighteen point seven percent, which is two hundred and three students go to a four-year college. And then we had a hundred students, which represents nine point two percent, go, I'm sorry, complete school with a C T E certification or apprenticeship. And then we had point six, which is six of our students go to the military. So again, knowing we had that transition from Exello to Naviance, that kind of impacted our ability to use the clearinghouse, but we're going to go back to that because the previous year when we had the clearinghouse, we had like about fifty-two percent of our students that we could have matriculation rate data on. So so this is a lower percent this time around, but we're expecting to go back into that system to get more accurate data in the future. And then when it relates to the, your question regarding remediation, so I'm still working with Tyler Schlegel, our college coordinator, to figure out how to pull that data for this last school year. Typically, what happens, though, is that you either go in or you're recommended for a second semester. So we think by the end of the year, it would be easier to figure out which students ended up needing that, but he's going to figure out how to run that report for us.
No, that's awesome, thank you. One last thing, though, because I think this is really important because the increase in graduation for the Black and Hispanic community was really large. So what, I mean, what are the, what were the key factors that really drove that?
Yes. So I really believe that our teachers in our buildings do an incredible job building relationships with kids. And the thing that we know when it relates to a sense of belonging or students doing what's necessary to get themselves successfully to complete their diploma, it takes typically one adult at a school that they have a strong rapport. And so we know some of our programs had these ninth-grade freshman seminar opportunities like Mountain View's had. This was the first year that that class graduated. And that was a pretty high graduation rate just at that school alone. We also know that Thompson Valley has also had a system like that in place as well. And we also know that other schools are trying to figure out ways to build similar programs, if not completely one class that, I'm sorry, one teacher that supports one class of freshmen throughout. They would at least have some type of touch point through extended learning opportunity or other type of activities where students have a stronger relationship with the adult that they can trust.
It sounds like it's really key, the way that kids in ninth grade get brought into the high school and then they don't feel so like, oh, my gosh, where am I?
And one of the things that that does is it does the work in our Strive Twenty Twenty Five. And when you think about also with our Portrait of a Graduate, that self-advocacy piece that we ask our students to have, that's another piece that that type of class really helps students generate some understanding around is how to advocate for themselves or how to use that adult to help advocate for themselves. But also, I think our teachers, they they understand that there's multiple opportunities for students to demonstrate learning as it relates to our Portrait of a Graduate as well. And so we're doing a lot of work there by looking at how you may have written, say, for an example, if you take a biology class, you may have written some type of research proposal. How can we look at that type of work in order to reinforce your learning in E L A? So it's some variety of different things that are in place in our schools that are really championing each student aspect of things.
Thank you so much for all your work and thanks for the answers. It's really great what you do.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you. Nice stop. All right. We have youth mental health update.
Thank you, Madam President. So tonight, we bring to you an update on our youth mental health task force. And we, as Thompson School District, are kind of a host or facilitator for this task force that is county-wide and incorporates a ton of different organizations within the county who all care about the mental health of the youth in Larimer County. So I have asked Dr. Jennifer Guthers, who is our Director of Student Success, to give you an update on this task force.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, members of the board. So glad to be here tonight. So I just wanted to first start with making a connection to Strive Twenty Twenty Five. Obviously, inclusive and supportive culture is key, as Mr. Robison was just talking about, in helping our students have the success that we dream for them. And so that really is the heart of this task force is trying to remove barriers for our youth to graduation and other successes by removing those barriers to the mental health supports they need in our community. I did want to take you back, even though we've talked about this task force a little bit, to take you back to how it ever came to be because it's it's been a little bit since we've had a chance to talk about that. So if we go back to spring twenty twenty-two, the Alliance for Suicide Prevention and Larimer County Health and Environment hosted a summit that they called Connect with Intention. And the idea behind that was really to bring together folks around the topic of mental health in our in our county. And since this was post-pandemic, to reconnect us all, both just getting to know each other again and to reinvigorate this work and to see what questions were out there and what needed to happen next to help the youth in Larimer County succeed. And so what happened was we had this incredible day, there's over three hundred people there. T S D was just invited to present. That was how we ended up there, okay? And at the end of it, the session that P S D, Estes Park, and us hosted around K twelve education and mental health was one of the highest-attended sessions. So we ended up kind of in the middle of this giant room with the people who put together the event with those of us from the school district. And all of us were like, oh, my goodness, we have to do more. So there's just a lot of energy, excitement in the room to do more. So that led us into fall twenty twenty-two, when we helped host the Youth Mental Health Summit. So what we did was at the 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 first one, we had a list of names, the people who created that event, had a list of names, people interested. So we sent that out and we asked them, who else did they think should come? And we ended up with an invitation list of around three to four hundred people to come together around the theme of eliminating barriers and illuminating partnerships. We were unfortunately still in the COVID era. Obviously, y'all have been going through that recently again, too. But right before this event, there was a big wave of it that came through. And even with that, we still had over two hundred people that came to this event. And so we did this amazing activity hosted mostly by the county to gather deep information about what all of these participants were seeing and hearing and feeling about why our youth may not be able to access the supports they need in our community around the topic of mental health. So we collected this enormous pile of data and then we had to figure out what to do with it. So kind of the same thing happened. We ended up in the middle of the room. Some people in this room were in the middle of the room with me. And we committed to forming this task force. So we asked the people who had attended that event to nominate people to be on the task force, to represent a bunch of important stakeholders within our community to continue these conversations. So I'll get a little bit more into who those stakeholders were on a later slide. But we gathered this group, we started this task force, and the idea was to continue this partnership between the county, private practice, and other organizations providing mental health and support and childcare and that sort of thing, and the school districts in Larimer County, and come together to take action, right? Because we kind of spent two sessions thinking and talking about the problems and connecting with each other, and we needed to do something about it. We felt a lot of energy around doing something about it, and that led into the formation of this task force. So that's a very brief history of how we ended up with the task force. So as far as our current membership, we currently have sixty-seven members of this team. It's definitely the case that all sixty-seven show up every single time, but sixty-seven people are invited each time. And how that happened is that we asked for nominations from the first two events of people they thought could represent the, basically, kind of the knowledge base within our community around mental health and specifically, mental health services for the youth of Larimer County. And so what we were looking for was a representative group of stakeholders that would include private clinicians, educators from all three school districts, members of the county, some elected officials, and community partners such as Alliance for Suicide Prevention. So we tried to build a team that was, first of all, very inclusive, but also we had people who are doing the work and decision-makers in the same room. Because one of the things that came out of the two earlier meetings was that oftentimes, those things are separate, right? So we have a lot of great ideas, say, in our folks doing clinical work, but they never get to talk to a superintendent or, you know, Tom Gonzalez, for instance, at the county. And so our dream was, could we get some of those people all in the same room so that these ideas can be freely exchanged and we can start removing some barriers to helping our our kids? The other thing that came out of the very first task force meeting we had, it's a little embarrassing to look back on this because we didn't notice it until we were in the meeting that we were having a task force about youth mental health and we didn't have anyone in that room under probably the age of thirty or so. So luckily, somebody caught that. I cannot take credit for that, but somebody did. And then we have really amazing partners at the county, Zach Ducharme is one of them. And he leveraged his wonderful contacts among the youth organizations in Larimer County to find us representatives. And the youth representatives on this task force have absolutely blown us away. They are so committed, they want to meet in between meetings, they, I mean, they speak up. You know, Mr. Robison was speaking of advocacy. They are incredible advocates for themselves and their peers. So we are very grateful to their addition to our team. So as far as, what do these meetings look like? How often do they happen? How do we come up with what we're going to do? So our full task force met three times last year. And as we worked through the topics that the group wanted to do, this is a very organic experience, right? So it's all consensus-driven by the members of the task force. They, we ask them what they want to learn about, what they want to do at the meetings and work on with each other. And then our planning team, which I help facilitate, tries to bring that to them. And so it's a unique position to be in for Thompson School District because we're really just, at least my role, is a facilitator. And so we come together with members from the county, from the three school districts, from the Alliance for Suicide Prevention. We take all the ideas that the task force is interested in and then we try to plan the next task force meeting based on that. At some point, I can't remember exactly where, in the series of those first meetings, we realized that this group was too large, because we wanted to be so representative, to actually get work done. And so what happened next was we decided in the next round of of task force meetings to have work groups. So in between the large task force meetings, we have these small work groups that formed. And the topics for those work groups, I'll go into in just a moment. But those topics were both generated from within the task force and based in that data that we had gathered at the summit. So it's all data-based. So we formed these three work groups this year. And the whole group has met twice this year. We have, our our next meeting is coming up on February thirteenth, so it's very soon. And I did put something in here that you may be interested in looking at in all of your spare time because at our last meeting, we were very lucky to receive the first public presentation of the Health District's Youth Behavioral Health Assessment Mapping Results and Key Findings, which is a very long title. But if you're interested in the topic of youth mental health, it is well worth your time to go look what they put together. It is absolutely fascinating. And so we got to be the first to see that publicly, the task force was. And then we incorporated that data into the work of our work groups. An example of some of the recommendations that came out of that was this, it was a massive effort that they undertook to gather this information. But a recommendation, for instance, was attract and retain a diverse and culturally competent workforce. Increase awareness and education of behavioral health. Expand wraparound services, so on and so forth. And so we were able to then bring those recommendations into the task force to further help the stakeholders there, incorporate that into the work groups, but also take it back to where they spend the rest of their lives. I only get to see them, you know, every once in a while. Very exciting. So then, one other thing I wanted to mention, I said this is kind of a unique situation because we are facilitators. And so my role on this team is that I help lead that planning team. And really, it's just to help organize thoughts. And really, it's just to help organize thoughts and help create the slideshows, get the meetings on the book, send out the invites, all that stuff. And then when we bring the task force together, I'm the main facilitator of that as well. But all of the things that we're doing are generated by requests and ideas from the task force itself and then the planning team, which, as I mentioned, is made up of folks from the county, Alliance for Suicide Prevention, and the three school districts. So I did want to share with you the topics of the work groups that have come together over the last few months. So we have three of them, as I mentioned. One of them is working on youth events and de-stigmatization of mental health support. So their kind of overarching goal is to plan and host resource events in, sorry, there's an extra word in there, I apologize. Plan and host resource events in several environments in order to inform, build connections, and support for our youth and families to minimize existing stigmas around mental health within the next six months. That is massive, because what they're talking about is the entire county. Remember, this isn't Thompson School District. This is all of Laramie County. So you can see, that goal, I think, is a great example of why we need to bring together practitioners, youth, and decision-makers, because there's no way that just our practitioners or just our youth, or even those two together, could try to pull off something like this without having some of the decision-makers in our community be part of it. The second work group is working on accessibility and school-based mental health. It's interesting, because most of the people on this work group actually don't work in our schools. And so it's very interesting to hear their conversations about how they want to really work on those partnerships with our school districts. So they are wanting to develop and implement greater access to behavioral health and healthcare services that are de-stigmatized in both peer and community-based school settings. And then our third group is working on financial infrastructure. I'll try and say that five times fast. And this group is really interested in developing comprehensive financial infrastructure to improve and streamline the process for accessing funding to provide high-quality services for youth. So that one is probably the most kind of high-level, behind-the-scenes project that people are working on. Then I had a few celebrations and next steps I wanted to share with you, and then we'll open up to questions. So we, as I mentioned earlier, the ongoing and enthusiastic youth engagement in this project, I think, really has kind of awed all of us, just phenomenal kids. And several of them are from Thompson School District. And I will say, to just hype up Thompson School District students just a little bit, I think they might be the most enthusiastic students there, and we're so appreciative of their time. I mean, they're coming at like 6 o'clock at night on a school night. And yes, I do feed them, but they still come and really engage. It's amazing. And then I think the other celebration that all of us talk about every time the task force comes together is building bonds across organizations on behalf of youth. You know, all of us who work in these service industries, as you well know, are incredibly busy. So trying to find time to get to know each other is really, really difficult. And the fact that now, you know, out of the 67 people, you know, we know each other, right? We recognize each other if we're out and about. And if somebody asks us a question, we're like, oh, I know who to call. I know how to ask. So those barriers that happen just because we're really busy, even those are starting to break down. Of course, trying to address the financial infrastructure issues is a very complex issue. We're not going to solve any complex issues if we don't have relationships with each other and know each other. So our next steps, despite all this time we've had together, we continue to feel a bit mystified about how each other's organizations work. So despite lots of opportunities to try and figure that out, I think we still need to work on that. So that's the next step. And then we really need to get across the finish line with our work group goals that I mentioned previously. So very, I feel very lucky to be a part of this task force, and thank you so much for listening.
Dr. Schaefer?
Nice job, Dr. Guthles, before the board, if you have any questions. I will share with you, so the next meeting is on February 13th, as Jennifer shared. On February 13th, Dr. Schneider, myself, and Theo Robison will actually be speaking to a national group on this at the AASA National Convention in San Diego. So in addition to presenting in our co-respondor unit, which is another presentation we were accepted for, we are part of, and I've shared this with you, a national cohort. So there's four or five school districts nationally that were invited to, invited as lighthouse districts, really, that's really illuminating and elevating the work in youth mental health. What makes our program and our task force so unique is that it is a consortium of the three school districts here in Laramie County and a partnership with county, city, nonprofit, you know, lots of agencies that are working together to address this very complex issue. And so nationally, they're taking notice of a number of school districts that are embarking on this really important work. We will, actually, as Jennifer shared this PowerPoint, I'm like, we're going to use maybe a lot of this PowerPoint for our presentation, so thank you for doing the work.
No problem.
But we really want to share our learning as well as learn from others. But again, I just want to point out that we're one of like four or five districts in the country that are part of this group that will be presenting at this national conference.
Are we ready for our questions? Okay. Any questions for Jennifer over anything? Nancy, go ahead.
So one of the things that I find interesting, as I listen to this presentation and read this presentation, and even other numerous presentations, I hear a lot of talk about bringing youth and the practitioners together and all of these agencies together to figure out how to work on this. What I do not ever hear mentioned as one of the large stakeholders are the parents. I mean, these students, they didn't just like get dropped by a stork into our schools. So where do the parents fit in all of this conversation? 67 members, and we don't have parents as part of that stakeholder, we think, to bring in the youth, but not the parents? I think parents are key, and they're critical to the mental health of children. And to assume that they're not needed, or that maybe they're the problem, I think does a disservice to the parents, as we say we want a partnership with them. So what, how are we going to bring the parents into this?
Yeah, parents are absolutely part of the task force. Many members of the task force are parents in our community, including myself. So we do try to check in and make sure that we have parent representation in any group that we build like this.
I'm sorry, but if they're already there as a clinician or some other role, and they also happen to be a parent, that's not the same as having a parent from the community, in my opinion.
Thank you for that feedback.
Anybody else have questions?
So Jennifer, to follow up on that, are there parents who are part of the group who are not clinicians?
Well, not everybody there is a clinician, because we have educators, members of, you know, local organizations, people who work in our schools. So yes, there would be parents there who are not clinicians.
Okay.
All right. Anybody else have questions?
You know, I do, and I feel bad that I didn't send this in advance, but it's sort of like, I thought of it as you were speaking. So it's okay if we do it later. I feel like it's probably baked into some of the things you said as well, so forgive me if I missed it. But, you know, one of the things that the youth tell us is how much the adults, you know, having a trusted adult, but also the adults just everywhere, impact what supports they get. And so the fact that part of the big challenges that students tell us is that it's, you know, they'll go ask for help, but they don't always get that help, because people don't know how to help. And so when I saw the demystify, I know that could mean a lot of things. And for me, that's what it like brought up, is like, is demystifying is, how does everybody become better at being able to help, you know? Because everybody cares, but we don't always know how to actually care in a way that helps. And so I was hoping that that's part of this, the work that some of those groups are doing.
Yeah, I think that, you know, you're right. What we're trying to demystify has many components to it. But one of the main components of that is understanding, what do all these organizations have to offer? And how do we connect people with that, right? So I just got a question today, for instance, about a certain provider wondering if they could meet with a student during school hours, right? So, you know, that, for instance, perhaps I'm the only person in Thompson School District that knows that process is probably not the most efficient and effective way to remove that particular barrier, because there is a process and we need people to know it. And so that is one tiny example of the type of barriers that exist just because we don't know how each other's organizations and groups work. All the way to, you know, the group that's working on that financial infrastructure, luckily, we have some people on that team who do understand health insurance, for instance, right? Like, I mean, when we start working on the topic of accessing mental health, unfortunately, the barriers far outnumber the supports, right? And so trying to have, there's no way any one of us in that room can understand how all of the pieces work. But there are some aspects of that that we can understand better so that we can, if a student shows up, say, in one of our counselor's offices and has a particular need, that maybe the counselor doesn't know exactly where that need can be met in the community, but they at least know who to ask. Because I think that we make a lot of assumptions about what all of us know about each other's groups, because some of them have been around for a very, very long time. Summit Stone, for instance, has been around for a very, very long time. So I think people might think, well, all of our school counselors know exactly how to help their families access Summit Stone, and vice versa, that everybody at Summit Stone knows exactly how to connect with, you know, our schools. And the answer is, they don't, because our organizations are so completely different from each other and how they function. So we have to continue to understand each other better, because that cannot, that can no longer get in the way for our students. As somebody mentioned earlier, you know, we watch these statistics, and we know that those statistics are real people. Those are real people and real people's children. And so we've got to figure out how to get these barriers out of the way so our kids can have what they need to succeed. So demystifying things includes a lot of things, but it definitely includes what you're asking about.
Thank you. And, you know, I also want to just call out something that would have been a whole nother presentation. And that is also how all of these, all of the people who have come to the three events you called out and are on the different groups, have taken things back from these events. And it's not just what's happening in the three meetings and the three work groups that exist today. You know, I have conversations regularly with people. I think I met with somebody from Summit Stone a few weeks ago, and they were, they're doing like a huge new project that really comes directly right out of this work. And that's just one person's job out of, you know, probably close to 500 people that have been identified as part of this some way. And so it's really cool to see how it's spinning off. And then I will also mention that in addition to the people who are sitting in the room and the different hats, many people are wearing several hats. There are also people in that room who are specifically representing like the best interest of a group of parents. There are several people who, you know, are talking to parents who are saying, you know, I need to know how to navigate my insurance. I need to have somebody who can support my kid while they're at school and not have it be something I have to miss work for. You know, I mean, some of those things are things that are directly coming from some of these service providers who support families. The Health District is one of them, where people go to get support. And they are, you know, sitting there as, showing us data that comes from what they hear every day from real parents. And so that's showing up in this consistently and in the room consistently as well. So people who maybe don't wear multiple hats are being represented because they're going to some of these resources and asking for these things.
If I may share another celebration based on what you just brought up. Because of the relationships formed on this task force, actually, a member of the Health District reached out to us and let us know that they had been inspired to write a grant that allowed them to extend some of the Health District services down into our school district. The Health District services are primarily centered in Fort Collins. And so it's very short-lived. So we've already met with our counselors. We got them the referrals. And it's going to provide some free services for the students and families of Thompson School District for the second semester. That partnership and conversation, none of that would have happened if we hadn't known each other, because I don't really think that some members of the Health District really understood how isolated Thompson School District feels from the services of the Health District. So hopefully, that is just one small step that we will take to continuing to expand that partnership there, too. And I will also add that the conversations we have with Estes Park because of this are fascinating. You know, we sometimes feel like we don't have as many services compared to Fort Collins. They're a whole different world up there. And so we're just really excited to continue to share ideas back and forth, because they've also figured out some things because of being more isolated that we haven't figured out yet. So we're always learning from each other.
Thank you very much. Very informative tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
All right. We have one written report. It's the monthly financial report. And will the, Lorley, will the board report be also posted eventually? The board report that we filled out online? It is there? But just not listed? Is it on our paper and I didn't see it? Okay. I'm sorry.
It's under Board Reports. Where you guys reported, that's where it's listed.
Oh, up here. Okay. I was expecting to see a written report.
It is a written report. Under Board Reports.
Okay. All right. I don't see it. I was looking up for, on here is all. My mistake. All right. If anybody have any further requests for information at all?
I just have one, and it's actually a follow-up to what Stu was saying earlier when he was explaining about, to the public, about our study sessions and that we go through all of this. So... So I was wondering, would it be, make sense for us to find a way, Lorley, in Board Docs, all of the RFIs that get submitted, that then come back with answers, to post those on Board Docs? Because then the community can see what questions we're answering, we're asking, and what the answers are.
I will refer that to Dr. Schaefer, and we'll talk about it.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. Anything else? All right. Meeting is adjourned.